Welcome everybody to the South Indian Village planning board first hybrid public meetings last work session on Monday, March 20, 2022. And I'd like to thank everybody in the office for their patience. This is our first time with with media, so. Yes, I would like to. So. I'll be.
I second.
So the the first item on our agenda is about subdivision of 550 slash 554. That's great. And the applicant has requested an adjournment on this application. So. I don't see any reason not to.
Well, it's a matter.
Okay.
Um, Jeffrey Blunt thought that they asked me to the um comments since there was a request for an adjournment. And there was a rather lengthy request for additional materials. Uh, and therefore I agree that this is reasonable request.
We're not a hybrid.
They requested for the work session at the end of April, but since that's been moved, um, we would say April 18th would be the appropriate date.
Right.
Yep. We'll vote on it though.
Yeah.
The whole of the week. Application from 755 to 54 Hill Street. Which one of them will I receive an application until the end of April 18th?
I second it. I second it.
Okay, I'll be there.
I don't know.
You take you take the minutes?
I don't know. I know. She's online. She's online.
Antoine's online?
I am here.
So if you're online, Antoine, do you want us to pull over here and pull it down?
Alice, is that what is that what you'd like me to do? You want to do the roll call from here? I can. No problem.
I don't think you need to sound anything else than the extension. But if we're doing.
Antoine, I think it was unanimous. I think it was unanimous.
Okay, next issue is um. Public hearing for 99 Sanford Place LLC. And um, we have people knocking.
So this is this is actually scheduled for next Monday?
For next Monday?
Yeah, so I think it's going to be our work session that we get ready for the next meeting. So we're next Monday, but um, yeah, that's on for next week, so. Alex, there's no raising the number as yet.
No, that's.
I I received a letter. I received a letter in the file here from Chester by an official of the building department. Signed by five of the residents. It's opened up very strongly with the decision. Unless it was a decision by the ZB today, it is a terrible thing for the paper, for the whole. And so I guess we made the record, I'm sure they'll appear.
Sure, let's make a make sure that a copy goes into the building.
Yes.
And then you press close.
Then you got one too, in the same thing.
Yeah, I got one more.
Here we are.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just make sure it's in there.
Yeah.
As I remember, it was the sense of reading. But this board wasn't asked to find because the CBA was compelled. The ZB decision was on the front door. Like we've done before, agreed with the goal. So that that I think stayed verbally in the zone. And everybody in attendance is partly convey that. But I I think it should be noted since this is being recorded differently, that that was the sense of this court. The CBA controls. I guess we can say.
Well, yeah, that, yes. I will spend. It's on the board tonight. Right.
So if I can have one of your copies, I will scan it tomorrow morning and make sure that it's put in the file. Thank you. I'll do that.
Okay, ready? Let's see, Thomas South Indian 51 on Lake. About a jerk. And I think we already.
We've got one more.
Yeah, we have that.
Yes. I think probably when there is communication on when the date is that they need to appear here because we had adjournments in the end of April. Right, so.
Do we?
It was adjourned in the end of April, which now that means it exists.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, so I'll ask Jeffrey if it's just that we have the panic and not exactly that we're coming back. Especially since we don't have work sessions anymore.
Okay, the next um. Item on the agenda, 71 Hill Street LLC.
This is another request to adjourn to one.
Yes.
Yeah, it came in September. Well, that that we should.
We have to go around that.
It's Wednesday, right? Hold this next one.
I'll be accepted. The joint certification for 71 Hill Street to delay the presentation to the next Monday and the fourth.
That's it.
You opposed?
Yeah.
Antoine, it was unanimous that we approved the extension.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, um, next one is Allen Ares to 71 Hill Street.
Are we doing site plan?
Okay.
We just consider scheduling a public hearing, but yeah, are we doing this? We haven't gotten a new site plan, have we?
Uh, we did.
Oh, we did. All right. I haven't looked at it yet.
Uh, and Kathy prepared a memo. Kathy, do you want to do you want to summarize anything?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so so. Yeah, it's uh, this is a memo dated March 23rd. And the moment is the applicant submitted a new survey. The survey only has the southern block shown, which is consistent. I think one of these microphones may need to be turned off, so that way I'm going to know if you've got.
Thanks.
Uh, so the um, the ownership survey uh, for the southernmost property, which is where the Polish goal is. And uh, shows the existing conditions and the um, not does not show the area of drainage to be improved or anything else. Just shows the existing existing condition. They also submitted a architect's plan that shows the relocation of the UBC access ramp as well as the um, existing blacktop remain, which is the area now is consistent with the survey. That's what we were looking for. We wanted those to be consistent. Um, the the applicants did not re submit uh, the full uh, set of the architect's plans. And one of those plans does show um, the existing, the quote unquote existing patio. Um, so that's the basement plant. But there are no changes that this board is reviewing for the basement. So um, the recommendation is that they um, have the thing to draw that sheet or the rest of the sheets. And um, and then do the CAD, the BCA application. And then the board can go ahead and schedule that hearing. The applicant will to draw those sheets or update the sheet to show the accurate blacktop area.
So what's still there?
It's still not exactly what this board had asked for. Um, the other part is that the building inspector has given input that the exact dimensions of the UBC ramp and the slope and social proofing and doing this part of the application to make sure it's ADA acceptable. Um, so that could be something that the board could, you know, delay and have him um, get here back as part of the condition of an approval. So to perfect.
So I feel like we're ready to just go to a public hearing yet, aren't we?
Um, tonight? No. Because um, if and if the if the planer agrees that they would prefer to have this that the applicant would draw that the sheets that do not currently exist on the site. Um, or if you agree with that, then.
Yes, I I do. I'm down to your control.
Don't you feel like the site plan's complete? You were saying there's a whole part of them?
Yeah, the um, the app, the application is for the ground level improvements. And those include the access ramp and the repairs to the front on railing. So yeah, that that's the part of the plant. That's what's important to sport. That's the only thing that is being presented to this board.
And and the ADA.
Right, the ADA compliant.
Of course. The ADA.
Right, oh, so that is actually your other unit for the interior. Yeah, the plank board doesn't usually, you know, give input on the interior. The um, the um, there was another uh, part of the application that was submitted. That was a um, what's it called? Stimulation or something.
Settlement, yeah, there was a settlement agreement that's not signed, but it looks like uh, these lawsuits, I think, are fairly common. Where people sue for ADA compliance and they actually enter this agreement where you make these improvements to the site. So you know, probably is important that we.
Is it that that was the originally reported, that was the word that we stopped until there was a complete application of the approval? So we're approving doing the ADA stuff as far as I'm concerned, even that does involve the ramp. And the issue is how much more or less is also linked up as the same thing as part of the. And if we're in the venue to complete, I mean, for the purposes proven doing the ADA.
Okay, that's the sense. Can you explain the lawsuit, please?
Uh, well, it's a compliant lawsuit, so you know, it doesn't involve this whole day. It's just uh, someone did sue the uh, the Polish American political from the applicant's council. I don't know if it's council record of this matter, probably not. I assume, um, but you know, some when people find ADA violations, they they point these lawsuits and over to force compliance and often there's a modicum of something.
Okay.
It's actually.
So what what will we try to keep? Next, what do you do? Back to the.
Yeah?
Do you want to hear the application?
Good evening to the applicant, David Lamont Jr., uh, Weaver Troy Montalcali, the champion. Who will draw those sheets, the three sheets that are not entirely accurate. The one thing that I want to clear up, there are two ADA issues here, is the exterior and the interior. The interior would be my position that this board has no jurisdiction over, and that's a building department issue. The exterior, we do have jurisdiction over. I think it's quite limited because the ADA rules are are long involved and and very clear. And that's what we all have to follow. So I don't think there are many issues for you to consider when we do get to a public hearing. Other than is the access ADA compliant? I don't know. I think you guys will have to refer that to somebody that has some sort of opinion on it. I think the building inspector is the person that would do that in the village. But we will draw those sheets tomorrow. And at that point, I think the application will be completed. We'll ask you next Monday. Discover the public hearing in the next available hearing, which I think will be the first hearing.
Right, anybody have any questions?
Well, I I did want to ask a couple of questions on that because I, in the drawing that we have, there's still what's described as a deck. Is that a on the existing deck? Because that was some of the controversy was about whether anything was being described as a deck that wasn't currently a deck.
I'm not I'm not sure what you're looking at, but there is no deck or outside extension of the use proposed. It will be used exactly as it has been since 1934, everything on the interior. If we were to come and and look for something on the exterior, we'd have to come back to the school. No expansion on the exterior.
I'm just looking at the drawing of the ramp, proposed ramp on the side of the building. So there's a little area that says deck.
Is that is that up in the air? It's a currently existing stair there that we're connecting into?
Okay. And then just the choice of putting that ramp on the side of the building where the blacktop is that was previously incorrectly described as a deck. So is that, you know, does it have to be on the side of the building with the blacktop? Is that?
It it does per ADA because you have to have access to the main um, the main area of the building. The current access behind goes into a kitchen area unless the deal and and that violates ADA. So part of the um, settlement on the lawsuit is that would be placed there, which is conforming location under the ADA laws.
Okay, so I'm just wondering how people then they get from Allen Street to where that ramp is. Is there a continuous like walkway to Allen Street where you would enter at that ramp on Allen Street? Like if you, where you entered from a parking lot?
There's there's a parking lot behind, which is appear to me to be the best way to access. Right now, I believe with the bricks in the front and the long side are uneven. It may not be the best access, but that may be something that we can fix in the future because of the current building.
So we move on to 25 Jane.
Is that going to be a public hearing? Did I hear that right?
It it'll probably be a deck.
So, um, trying to navigate.
This is going to be like a work session.
Well, actually, um, that's a public meeting and um, the the board that actually had this decision on this. This is an application that's interior renovation going and the existing study is going to be changed. And that, so in this case, if it's not going to result in any additional sort of floor area or any additional apartment space as well. Okay, so based on that, um, I would recommend putting this as soon as possible. And then getting a little ahead of myself in anticipation of that, if you're being referenced.
Well, I. The board agrees, I think we should, it isn't a sort of detail.
Is 25 Jane the best one?
No.
That's why I'm so confused.
There's a store two south with no chalk. It seems that the interpretation, like as I said, was not original.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
Reading code, which was used, it's supposed to rest in 38 in the code. It is now because the rest of the village, because these make the decision tomorrow night at 5 o'clock meeting. To reinterpret even by amendment, that's 38 in the code. So we no longer have to approve what happens to the archer's station through things that are on warrants for residences. That's because we need the warrants presence. They may amend it. We may not have to approve every time that Kelly or Chris.
I understand that.
Or if they think if we prove the restaurant, the length of the bar, the size of the glasses and they can get out of that business. But this one.
I understand. I understand that, Tom.
So if Jackie do it, we have to approve.
Okay.
Yeah, until they make that clause.
Yeah, we kind of just simple as here, if Jackie change, we'll reach out, correct?
So I had uh, for your consideration, put together a reservation for it. Um, it's basically the stage of this application and then you can take action here. Sephora, um, and with that, we were not required by hearing for purpose. When we implement the actual name of the deed under the wish date. So let me check that up. If you want to take a look. It seems like there was any reason in the life.
Sephora at the page.
I get it, because this doesn't, this doesn't require any further.
Yeah, just.
Why is this?
Well, it used to be, it's uh, more than it was a jewelry store.
Oh, okay.
So we can prepare first on the left?
Yeah, that's.
Over the. There's been a fast time discussion. Version was motion. I'm just going to go through it and then we may get out of this here.
I hope, but I'm still wondering, but what what are the minor changes? It's all interior, they're putting up some building racks and uh.
Okay, so it definitely doesn't seem like this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, okay, but I just was curious.
I think dressing rooms is the, uh, don't approach for hedge protection.
And there's no code enforcement anywhere. Those, there's no code enforcement.
I know that it does changes.
So they will be that a building permit, so.
Yeah, oh, cool. Well, that'll be fun. They just need, and so um, after second approval, they'll need a real improvement for those interior modifications. Are they taking walls down? You don't know.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah. I was basically sitting around, who said we're in the back or does, doesn't seem like something that needs to come before us. But it's the end of public.
Right, right.
So I want to.
Move the radio on.
I'd like to make emotionally um, approved interior red flags of 25 Jane Street. Um, main and owner LLC and um. Well, I'm in tonight.
You just like it's on, right?
It's a beautiful.
I think it's a roll call.
Okay.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, we go. Ms. Claire?
Aye.
Ms. Gal?
Aye.
Ms. Merrick Farland?
Aye.
And this, first.
First name.
Sorry. Aye.
So, and so it's against. And for that, that was your answer.
Okay, ask the chairman.
That's the way.
The shop.
No, I think it's that first.
Oh, yeah, I. That's not open. Is that what it is?
Oh.
It just seems very odd to me that's the LLC.
Oh, there's.
What do I do with it? Like Japanese?
Put it, put it right in the file on the front.
Okay.
Like standing up.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah. All right, so pre submission conference to for um, South Indian Crew LLC, stop the job. This is for the installation of a EV charger.
Right, I knew that. I knew that.
You want to?
I actually looked where they're from. I'm up, I'm up to speed on this.
Third wall of the street?
Yeah.
25, third way in the parking. It's the back.
Yeah, I wonder, Kat, what's your ability to share plans right now? Now is the applicant here?
I heard the applicant is having trouble logging in. Kat, do you know if there's anyone else uh, in the waiting room?
No. Antoine is handling that.
Um, you didn't make me a host, Kat, and there's nobody in the attendees as of right now.
Is that within that it is next to class?
Oh, hold on, I have somebody now, but you do have to make me the host.
I will do that for you. My apologies, man. We go.
Okay, so I have a Jesse, um, and it says dot S H I H. Would that be the applicant, Alex?
Uh, I'm not sure, but I believe that's probably the case.
Okay, so I'm gonna admit him. Hang on one second.
Great, thanks.
I am trying to promote him, but it's not allowing me to. Okay, I've tried this twice, Kat, but it's not doing anything. I click promote to panelists and nothing happens.
And sometimes that happens to me too. I've do it a couple of times.
Okay, here we go. It says he's being promoted.
Right.
Okay. Nope, it's not working. Um, I'm sorry, board, I I keep clicking it and nothing is happening. He just stays in the attendee.
All right, let me try.
Okay, hold on, it's saying he's joining now. Here we go, we got him. Okay. Okay, um, Jesse, if you could just put your camera on and turn on your mic, that would be great.
Hey, yeah, um, so yeah, I'm with Kimberly Horn, but um, my partner, Chris, will be joining to present for this project. Hello?
Yes, we're here.
Okay.
So is is Chris in the screen share of the plan?
Chris, are you going to screen share the plans?
There is no Chris yet. There's nobody.
Oh, sorry, wait, so are you guys up to us in the agenda already?
We are. Perfect.
Okay, one moment.
And Jesse, are you going to be able to screen share the plan?
He's talking to someone. Um, if he has the plans, he'll be able to screen share them. So Jesse, do you have the plans?
Sure, I'm I'm gonna hand it over to Chris uh, right now.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, everyone, thank you for, uh, your patience here, sorry about the holdup.
Chris, could I just have your last name, please, for the record?
Yes, this is, uh, Chris Arpall here with Kim Lee Horn. And I'm going to pull up my drawing.
Chris, do you need help screenshot, oh, okay.
Here we go, sorry, guys, I just had to, uh, I had computer issues, so. Thanks for, uh, bearing with me here.
Great job, we see it.
Awesome. Okay, so today, uh, I'm representing Volta Charging here at, uh. And we are looking to install two EV charging stations at your town's local Stop and Shop off of one six seven Main Street. And let me get into it, here is the property. We're looking to propose it, uh, within the boundaries of this property line at this location. And then this is what our charging station looks like. Um, Volta Charging is unique, um, company here where they provide free EV charging for their patrons at, uh, retail stores. Through the use of advertising on the sides of their screens or on the sides of their fixtures. Uh, each fixture has dual sided screens for their advertising displays. Um, as you can see here, we have a size, uh, display of forty eight inches by twenty seven inches. So the screen does not take up the whole charging station.
What is the size of the screen?
Say, say that again, I'm sorry.
Size of the screen?
It is forty eight inches by twenty seven inches.
Would that be considered a sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, they are.
It definitely needs ARB, but it also has to meet the probably the sign requirement.
Yeah. Okay.
Certainly. No worries, thank you. Um, yeah, so Volta, uh, through their use of advertisement, they can produce, um, free EV charging. Uh, their advertisement is often off premise advertising that, uh, can consist of Panera Bread, very general stores, car, car and automotive. Companies, um, nothing illicit or, uh, profane, so. That is that.
Oh, goodness, thank.
Okay, I will jump into the site plan itself. Um, what, what we have proposed here is that we're looking to tie into an existing electrical panel within the, uh, existing Stop and Shop electrical room. Um, what we're planning on doing is proposing an interior mount of conduit, bringing it out to the storefront and then boring underground to our proposed station location. Uh, what we're proposing is to, um, convert two parking stalls to one EV parking stall with the reduction of one parking stall for EV, for the EV charger itself. And then I will give you a close up of that. This is the parking spot itself. Uh, here we have two E, uh, standard parking stalls, one parking stall which we were complaint, planning on converting to the charging fixture station. And then one for the EV parking. Um, I'd also like to note that, uh, although it's an EV parking stall, any standard parking car, any standard car, uh, can park in this stall. So it's, it's not solely EV cha, uh, cars, obviously the intent is for EV charging. Um, but we like to make that, you know, something to be aware of. And then, yes, this is a drive aisle.
One parking stall, it's one EV charging stall?
This is, well, it's for EV charging, um, but Volta, you know, we like to say any car can park there, there's, it's not specifically, uh. You know, it doesn't exclude diesel or gas powered cars.
Losing his thought, right, we're losing his thought.
So in this case, yes, we are losing a spot for the charging fixture itself. So that is that.
Right, right, that's already a very precarious parking situation there. So that, so, um, I guess to give the applicant some input, they, they would need to go to some board for relief to lose one parking space. Um, ARB for the advertising sign basically was, uh.
Yeah.
Right, the, uh, the charge station is basically a sign. Um, I, I just had questions on why this location was chosen.
So.
Because just far away from, from where, you know, you have to borrow the same underground for a while to get there.
Mm-hmm, so, uh, Volta's business model is to have it in high pedestrian traffic areas and, um. This location was chosen by Volta, um, it's right near the storefront and, um, it just was the optimal location for Volta in this case. Um, that we're definitely, you know, open to hear if, uh, the town, your town would like to have any, uh, different locations in mind, um. But yes, this was the location of Volta's choice.
Chris, you're dealing with a village that's under tremendous pressure, especially in the summer, at that particular location for parking because there aren't enough parking places for the residents that want to shop there. I think everybody on this board is probably at, over on the block a couple of times. Just like to get a parking place there in the summer. So you, you might be hearing a little bit of that in our voice, but a little bit of incredulity in our voices. And this is even being proposed. And on top of that, I just have a question, how does Volta work? Because I drive it to be.
Mm-hmm.
And I might try to go to something other than the brand of car that I drive, I can never hook up. So, well, how do you, how do you guys put your hookup?
Sorry, I lost you on the last part, how do we, how do we what?
What's the hookup for, I mean, for all different?
Oh, so, yes, yep, the, uh, charger itself is a universal, uh, cord. And I believe it works with, uh, any type of electric vehicle. I know Tesla some, has a specific port that they use, but I think they have an adapter which would work for this charging station. So. Does that ans- answer your question, or can I allude to more?
It does, and you, you know how much, how much voltage or wattage it, it's.
Yeah, yes, this is our power, uh, type here, um, with, so what we're planning on, um, putting at this site is an L two charger. Um, so it is in a high powered, uh, charging station as is a, uh, a DC fast charger, this is kind of the step below. Um, so that's why we're able to pull from the existing power and charge, uh, your vehicles. So we're pulling, uh, forty eight amps out of the existing charger or out of the existing, uh, electrical room. And we perform a load study to make sure that the, uh, electrical room has the capacity to, uh, deal with our charging station.
Does that mean that the, uh, that the market pays for the power?
Sorry, I, I can't hear you.
I can, I can look in, in the bloodworks and charge up for the time it takes me to buy the.
Yeah, so.
Who pays for the?
So the, the advertisement on the sides actually is the main source of payment, um. That's, that's their business model, um, it's free EV charging, so any car, electric, can just pull up to the store. And it's not meant to charge your entire car fully, um, it's mainly to just give you a little bit of juice so you can park your car, go shopping for however long. And get a little bit of juice go from A to B.
Do you, do you publish guidelines on the ads and then does the village have any input if there's an ad that's objected to, or is it just, you know, are those written guidelines somewhere?
Um, so Volta has, uh, is a nationwide company and they have sponsorship or advertising, uh, partnerships with, uh, various other retail stores, um, so I don't believe that they would be able to, well, I believe um, that they have, they are able to change their advertisement based off of, um. Certain locations, but I'm not sure if they are able to change it specifically, uh, for the village here. They, they have just nationwide brands that they partner with that are changed. So this screen also changes roughly every, uh, as often as every eight to ten seconds. So they'll have rotating advertisements displaying, um. So.
Is it all, well, it has to be forty eight inches, or there are different models that Volta has?
They have, uh, this is their main model, I think, I believe even the fast charger, uh, has the same screen dimensions. And they also have like remote, um, almost pedestals that they can place in charging stations or parking stalls or locations that don't have enough room, um. But this is their main model that they go with the forty eight inch by twenty seven inch.
And does it, does the advertising stuff on the stores close?
Uh, it does not, it can run, uh, all night.
It's an EVA issue?
Uh, I, I, uh, no, I, I don't, I think that's an ARB issue.
Oh, an A, that's wrong, that's wrong.
But I thought if it was losing one parking spot, there would have to go.
That's a EVA.
Yeah, that's a EVA, yeah, yeah, okay. But I was asking about the coverage.
Oh.
I'm, I'm, I'm worried, even if you lose one, where do you lose it?
Right.
You say commercially, I'm, I'm, I'm putting it in a different location.
Well, I was just curious, he's, he's saying that advertising pays for, who, who pays the electric bill though?
There's probably a reason between.
Yeah, that is, it'd have to be separately metered, right?
But that's, you know, profit.
I don't know.
Who pays for it, who pays for it?
Why, it's not a science.
The advertising pays for the charging and the maintenance of the station and the, uh, the connecting to the existing power.
And Chris, regarding the advertising, so this forty eight by twenty seven screen will constantly be showing ads twenty four hours a day?
Uh, sometimes, well, uh, yes, but also, it also shows, uh, Volta's main like design page, which is something similar to this, it's very elegant, uh, screen design, so it'll shift between Volta's page versus, uh, advertisement.
Is it light based, that, yeah, does it have a backup light, like?
And how many advertising?
Wait, is that what you mean, LED screen or?
Yes, LED screen.
How many ads would be within that period?
Um, so if ads are changing as often as every eight seconds, um. What was the, uh, question in terms of how, how many ads can be displayed?
Ads displayed in twenty four hours. Definitely.
I would have to do the math there, um, which. Um.
Aren't you asking how many different, eh, like, how many?
No, there would be different, there would.
Oh, how many different types of ads, okay.
I'm sure, but, but the fact is that there would be twenty four seven, there would be.
Yeah.
Light emitted from there with advertising.
Right, and that brings something, like, does it meet the, the bright skies? Conditions that we have in the village.
That's a good question, yeah, very good question, how much, how much glare is of this?
Is it gonna kill, like, night flying bats and night flying moths? Are, it's gonna get thrown off horse while they're driving?
And it's also close enough to the street where it's three parking spaces away from the street, I believe.
Yes. And I believe this is a drive aisle, um.
It is, and then there's a sidewalk aside to the south of that, so that light would be emitted onto the street so that that would be something that people would look at from the street as they drive by as well.
Yes, so it is intended for, uh, walking pedestrians, um, however, uh, being that it's fairly close to the street here, uh. It may attract attention from the road.
Right, well, especially in the evening, it probably, it most likely would because of.
Yeah.
The light moving and, and the reaction that's happening on the screen.
Is it a joint application from Stop and Shop and?
Yes.
Okay, so you approach Stop and Shop and they want this and then join the application?
Yeah, so Stop and Shop and Volta have a partnership, so they did like a nationwide, uh, thing where, um, Stop and Shop believes that if they have charging stations, they'll attract more, uh, customers in some sort of percentage. So like EV chargers would rather go to a place where they can charge their car, um, as opposed to another possible grocery store that doesn't have EV charging, um.
You don't even have another grocery store here in Southampton.
Oh. Well, I assume that's why they wanna put it here. Um, but.
Would Volta also be looking to have other stations within Southampton?
It's possible, um, so Volta is partnered with, uh, numerous retail stores, including Stop and Shop, uh, Kohl's, Wegmans, um, Walgreens. So it, it's wherever they're looking to, uh, place their stations within their sort of, uh, partnerships with the retail stores, that's probably where, um. I believe that they would try again, um, maybe in your, in your village, but I, I can't say for certain.
So there, is there an objective of how many? This might be outside of purview, this particular application, but is there a, um. Is there an objective to have X number of these, um, stations in a particular lookout?
Uh.
City or town?
Uh, so they, there is not a set number, often we deal with, when we are designing and implementing, uh, the charging stations, we often are putting in two per location, so this is just a special instance where we're putting in one. Uh, I've seen as many as six, uh, at one location, or even we were doing it at a Six Flags where we put in twenty six, so it's like, yeah, I think it all, it, it's wherever makes the most sense for the specific store.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question now, how tall is the charging station?
Sure, it's about, uh, roughly just under eight feet. The size, uh, size specs are as follows here, eighty five inches tall by thirty six point five inches wide. And it is about a foot and a couple inches deep, fifteen point five.
One more thing to consider, and it's probably not part of our purview either, but, um, there's more accidents in that parking lot?
Oh, sorry?
I can just imagine somebody running that over.
Oh, so our station is also protected by bollards, um, so in the event that somebody would to run into the station. Uh, God forbid, but, you know, the bollards should protect the station and be the customer.
The, the bollards are why you have the second box there, right?
Sorry, say that again?
You, you need, you need, you need to use of the depth of the second parking spot in order to deal with items like the bollards.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't.
The charging stations take up a lot of the second parking spot to the east.
Yes.
So I assume it gets protected by the bollards you mentioned, which uses up a normal parking space or at least part of it.
Yes, so the bollards should do protection. There's also this signpost here with a bollard, which may offer additional protection from this side. And then the spot itself has a wheel stop, so that would prevent any car from driving even further. I'm, I'm not sure if I fully answered your question because it's hard to hear.
I haven't seen one of these. You're using two parking spots. One is, you're keeping probably entirely the park, the vehicle near enough to the station with the cord that fits cars, charging, electric cars of all types. That's the west one, as you look at it. The east one going further up the hill, that is taken out of use. And I'm just wondering why it's taken out of use completely. It could be turning to a curb, I guess, to get to those two difficult parking spaces that are to the south. But the use of the other, the second parking spot, I assume is for things like protective bollards to keep the station from, for the physical, for the, the stations from getting run over.
Exactly, that's, uh, that's the main idea. I, I don't believe, sorry, I'm getting blinded here. Um, I don't believe I heard your question entirely. I heard the bollards being protecting toward the west and the station stall to the east.
Well, the question is, if you're at large, what is the use of the east parking facility that we no longer have? A couple of feet is for this stand with the lights. I don't think the rest of it is for wiring. But I assume you just said it's probably for protective bollards and nobody backs into the back end of this, of the stand.
There's some sort of foundation for those.
Yes, there are, uh, we have foundation details for the charging station that I can represent here. So it's not too, so the, the nice thing about the boring method, which we're looking to take to bring the conduit under the parking lot is that it's not very invasive and same with the footprint of the foundation here. It's only five by five. Um, so it would all be, it would be in the stall, uh, that we're looking to change. And, um, the, the conduit would get there through boring. So these are the foundation details. Um, I just want to show you guys that it's not too invasive of a footprint. And.
So Chris, if you were, um, for an actual site plan application, you would remove the details that are not to be used?
We, we could do that if, if that's what you guys prefer. Yeah, this is kind of the template we use ma- mainly because we have so many charging stations that we're installing that it's easiest and most efficient to just have not used on our drawings. But. Yeah, besides the point, um, yeah, the, the station is protected by bollards on all four sides. Wheel stops there to prevent any driver from accidentally going too far. And we have a signpost with bollard here for, I guess, additional protection. And the entire stall itself, including this stall with the charging station, will be striped, uh, newly by Volta. And, uh, to look clean and new. And it will include EV charging here with Volta's logo.
Chris, you've heard.
I'm sorry.
Park in the spot, not just an electric?
Yes.
Does that generally happen? And does it, you know, then if you have an electric car, are you able to use that as a, if you're in a very busy location?
Yeah, so, yep, so, uh, any car can park in this location. Um, I mean, it would be, if I was driving in a gasoline car, I probably wouldn't just for the sake, you know, to save a spot for an EV car. But yes, this spot isn't meant to exclude any car. It's mainly meant to upgrade the stall for EV charging.
Will we summarize the board's comments?
Yes, I think it's three.
So, um, just as general feedback for the pre-submission conference, uh, you would need to go to the zoning board for a parking variance. You would need, need to go to the architectural review board, likely for the structure and also for, uh, sign review. Um, you would want to make sure that your dark skies compliant with the screen. Um, but that's probably something that would get reviewed in the building department level. Um, and then when you come back to make a site plan application, I think this board would likely primarily be concerned with how this would impact traffic circulation in the parking lot and whether this location on the site is appropriate, whether there's another location that might be better for, you know, traffic circulation, pedestrian safety, um, and whether it could take up one parking spot instead of two.
Yeah, so the, the goal is definitely to, you know, utilize what we can within the given space here. We often put charging stations in landscaped islands. Um, but for this site, uh, we did not have that opportunity because we would be impeding on the property li- lines over here. And there is just, uh, not a lot of space, as you guys have mentioned. So we're definitely open to, uh, relocating the stall if that's what is preferable. Um, I would have to relay any of that information to our client Volta.
So Chris, as you heard, this would have to go to the, the zoning board. Obviously, that's a separate board, um, so there'd be separate public hearings, separate notice required. Uh, one of the requirements, um, for that board is that you've explored all possible alternatives. That's going to be one of the criteria for the variance. Um, so it's something that you may want to look into. Um, and obviously, if there's a way to preserve the existing amount of parking spaces, you could eliminate the requirement for the variance and eliminate the, the board of review as part of the process. So it's something to consider.
Sounds great. Thank you, Alex.
Uh, is there one nearby that the board could take a look at, maybe?
Um, I could do a quick search because we have a.
A Stop and Shop?
Yeah, let's see.
The huge part, right? Oh, right, and half the base has one. And I, you know, the, the advertising thing is an interesting, you know, this is sort of a billboard and, yeah. And I don't know, you know, the village has anything in it about this type of advertising, so.
It definitely has a billboard.
Like the ones up on the highway.
Exactly.
You've done that one.
Just a little bigger, but yeah.
Yeah, it's definitely a new, nuanced sort of.
And is it connected with Stop and Shop then, or is it considered connected with a separate business? Because the sign rules have to do with, you know, how close it is to the business, is it appropriate for the business and, and all of those things. It's inconsistent. So the question is, would they analyze it in terms of just if it's a separate business or is it, you know, Stop and Shop signage that's novel?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not just. Right.
Right, it's not like strawberries, $3.99, it's, it's, it's on the jeweler's.
It's a sign unrelated to the business.
Yeah.
I believe there's one at the Smith Haven Mall, if I'm not mistaken. Lake Grove? I think there's one in Lake Grove that is here, Haven Mall.
The closest one I'm seeing is, um, in, in Hampton's Bay. Uh, 194 West Montauk Highway at the Stop and Shop.
It's there already?
Let's see.
Can you share what that location is in that parking lot? That is a much larger, much larger parking lot.
You know what? It's in the final phases of permitting, so, sorry about.
The one in Lake Grove, I believe, is open, because I think I've seen it.
Yes.
Which one?
There's one at the Smith Haven Mall in Lake Grove, I believe, by Macy's. I believe that's a Volta one, Chris, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, I'm looking here. Yeah, at the Macy's, that sounds familiar. Believe we do have a Macy's, uh, charging station.
So I would, I would, um, suggest that you might want to, uh, speak with the building inspector about getting a determination to whether this is a billboard sign. Um, it, it sounds like it might fall into that definition in the code and, uh, billboard signs are prohibited in all districts in the village.
Got it. I can, uh, I'll reach out to him. So I would just like to re- reiterate, uh, kind of the process you guys laid out. So I'll, I'll relate this information to our client and see where they want to take, uh, everything. But, so it looks like we're gonna have to bring this to the ZVA. Uh, and this is gonna be for, uh, the parking count or the issues of running into not enough parking and possibly dark skies compliance.
Chris, is there a way to show my screen for a moment?
Oh, yes, please. Here we go.
And if the board can see this, then I'll, this is helpful.
Yep, that is it. Uh, so this one is in the landscaped island, so it does not have bollards, but it's a very nice design. Uh, that's their main screen, so that's kind of what I was talking about, where it's not entirely just straight advertisements every second of the day. Um, it's like an ocean that like the wave moves. It's pretty cool. Um, and then you can see there's free EV charging on the side, uh, right under the Volta logo. And then all of that striping there on the parking lot itself is striped by Volta. Thank you for pulling that up too, Alex. I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, I think he should probably check with the building inspector first because it's.
If it's a billboard, then it's not.
It's a new issue, right?
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I'll just get that interpretation from the, the building inspector first about what is considered, if it's considered a billboard sign or not. I'll know from there what he can do.
Got it.
You can follow up with the, with the building department this week.
Awesome. Um, are, are there any other, um, questions I can answer? Or, um, if there's any other information I could write down? I have the dark skies, uh, you know, to speak with the building inspector, whether or not it's a billboard. The parking variance.
Did we say it's a corner if it's just one space? Yeah, so that was, the other thing that came up is, is can you just use one space for this? Would, would it park right to the CBA? Is there any way to do this with one, with one space?
Um.
Yeah, somewhere else, somewhere out of the way.
Yeah, let's, there might be a location toward.
Right, exactly.
That's really all it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it would have a better chance, it seems.
Yeah.
Maybe we consider, um, are there other areas of that block that are more out of the way than are?
Yeah, like there could be, um, I mean, so Volta also wants their charging stations in the most ideal customer pedestrian sort of location. Um, we could look into a spot that's like down on this corner, but then again, are we running into setback requirement issues or other unforeseeable, um, impediments to our, to our project here? So unfortunately, I, I don't have an answer off the top of my head for that. Um, it seems like our best option here is with this spot, but I would have to discuss with my team in Volta to see what we could do.
Yeah, I think I could use more.
Yeah, I would start in the building now because if it's a billboard, no sense of going, you have another location.
Okay. Yep, so start off with checking with the building inspector because that's the, that will be a big impediment, whether or not it's a billboard.
And I think, did you have, um, sign approval from the architectural review board on your, on that list as well?
We, no, we, we do not. Sorry for the, uh, technical difficulties earlier, but thank you guys for listening. If there are any other questions that come up, please feel free to reach out. And I would surely answer those questions.
Thank you.
Also, before I go, is there a way to access the live recording?
Um, yes, it's, um, actually being recorded live right now on YouTube. And, um, if you can't find it there on YouTube, um, you can also go to the village website and it'll be under this meeting time and date. So it'll be in two places. And the third option is, I can also email you. Everybody that logs into Zoom has an email account on there, so I could send you a copy as soon as it's done.
That would be fantastic.
Okay, so Jesse, if you logged in under your email, it'll be sent to you. If the other guy did, it'll go to him. One of you.
Awesome. We will, we will get it. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be right along. Um, we're on the minutes approvals. Mark 7th and mark 14th.
If that, if my attempt to review the minutes gets caught, as I told you, some of your minutes go into my jump man and others come to me. So I keep looking, jumping out for the minutes. I think I set the switches. You've got the score.
Um, I do, but I also do not have that February 28th was approved. Um, it, it's not on, um, your agenda, but I don't have that it was approved and it was not released either.
It's swappable. It's required to be provided under the law.
I, I don't have minute review back on March 14th. I have the February 28th, I have revisions, and March 7th, I have revisions. March 14th, I did not get revisions on.
Mark 14th was the special meeting.
14th. Um, so I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from February 28th and March 7th, 2022. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes for February twenty-eighth and March seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, everyone says aye.
Yep, I just thought, a note on minutes. We have to, um, figure out some sort of a system, because I'm not receiving the minutes. Um, we should all receive them, correct?
I, I send them to everybody. Um, Tony.
Really? All right.
I'm checking my spam folder now, because they were going ahead for me. So I, I got them there. Now, I, I had another question. Should we reply all of them?
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, okay, yes, yes. Yeah, so now I'm, now I'm checking. But when we get them, we should acknowledge it and reply that to all.
Yeah. Okay, that's it. I'll move the adjourn.
So we're gonna close the meeting? Do you wanna make that motion?
I would like to motion that you will completely close the meeting. Second, it's, it's a third.
Oh, later?
Aye.